Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting, a special budget hearing meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2025, 6:30 PM. Let's see, the meeting is being recorded by Greenfield Community Television. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Not seeing any. Secretary Denis, will you call the role?
Yes. Secretary Denis, I'm here. Member Martini?
Here.
Chair Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Here.
Member Childs?
Here.
Member Goodwin?
Here.
And Mayor Disorga?
Here.
Oh, okay, great. Then we are all present and have a quorum.
All right, and it is 6:32 PM. We'll start with a public comment with folks who are in the room. If you're in the room and wish to give public comment, please let Susan Farber know, she's right there. And then if you are on Zoom and would like to give public comment, please let me know in the chat.
Let me just get the timer set. Glenn, it's two minutes, right? Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna stay right here. My name is Melissa Webb, I live here in Greenfield. I have not one, not two, but three kids who all attend Greenfield Public Schools. Two of my children are on IEPs and one of them is on a 504. I am here to say that we are very top-heavy as a district. We pay a lot to our administration and to our central office staff. As a nice gesture, we did a little Valentine's Day thing for Newton, and I thought, oh, it'd be really cute, I could, you know, bring some to central office. They always get forgotten about. And when I asked how many staff were there, I was told 35. Thirty-five is more staff or relatively comparable to what we have in a building for our students. So to me, I was not able to bring little gifts by. I figured it'd be 15, 20 people, not 35. I was expecting it to be a lot less. My child's classroom still doesn't have an IA. Are we competitively paying our IAs? No, I think we're competitively paying the top or end of our budget, the people who are in central office. Kids don't get excited about a 504 coordinator, which used to be a stipend position, which now I see as getting an assistant, a stipend position. That's where it was when I first started with my son in pre-K, a stipend position that was done by the adjustment counselor in the building. When it comes to an IEP, I see a different lead person at each meeting. But yet, I talk to families in the community who have kids who are severely autistic, and they tell me, we're going to a different school, we're a school of choice now. And I say, why? We have a program that can meet your child's needs. Oh, that's never been discussed with us. So I look at paying people more, having more people, it's just not always helpful. We need more boots on the ground.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name's Tara Cludier, I am a Greenfield resident. I wonder if I should go closer, that noise is a little intense. Anyway, hopefully it stops. I just want to tell you quickly who I am, I'm fully invested in this place. I am a GHS grad from 1988. I am the mother of three children who have graduated from Greenfield Public Schools. They're doing great, by the way, class of 2018, and twins of class of 2023. I have taught in Greenfield Public Schools since 1995. I am the vice president of the GEA, the teachers' union. And I'm still a Spanish teacher here in Greenfield. So I'm here to ask you to pass the budget. We can't afford to have cuts to our school. I'm in support of many things in that budget, I think there are some things we could talk about, but we can't take less money. I feel like if the redistricting is one of the things that's really causing us these big issues, let's look at it again. I don't know that that's, you know, do we have to do the entire thing right now if that's gonna mean fewer teachers, fewer bodies in front of children? I guess that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Judy Bennett, I live in Greenfield. I am an eighth grade science teacher currently at the high school. I will be moving down to the middle school next year. I can't tell you how not looking forward to packing up my room I am, but that is something I will have to do. I was looking at the slides from the superintendent, and I would just echo the comments from Ms. Cludier, because I'm asking you to, yes, pass the budget. I know it is a heavy lift, it kind of always is when we have these discussions, but the topics that were brought up on the impacts of level servicing, of class sizes, I know class sizes were brought up this fall, especially with the elementary and kindergarten classrooms, and I know that that's a concern at all grade levels. And this year, I'm implementing new curriculum, so I'm very thankful that the district was able to get funding and provide the science curriculum that we're implementing. And I know that that is also a heavy lift, that if that is now on our budget, but I do think that those things are important for our students across the district. So I guess I would just ask that you take our students into consideration and our staff into consideration. We're all vital to the success of our students and our community, so thank you.
That's all our public comment in the room, thank you. And I'm not seeing any yet on Zoom. One more second, if anyone wants to write to me and ask to speak, happy to recognize you. All right, I'm not seeing any. We'll move on to the fiscal year 2026 budget public hearing. Superintendent?
Thank you, I'm gonna share my screen. Copies of the slideshow are online as well as in here on the table if you are present here and would like a copy. Okay, to start, we'd like to talk about the priorities that are in the budget. Many of these priorities also came from a lot of the work the Budget and Finance Subcommittee did in meeting with parents and families at LPAC, CPAC, PTO meetings, school council meetings. We took into consideration the feedback that we got from those families, and those considerations are highlighted throughout these first three slides. One of the things, and Ms. Bennett already addressed it in her public comment this evening, is to continue to fund and provide support in ELA, math, science, and history. We've adopted high-quality instructional materials across the district, and we need to continue to support those materials in our classroom.
Sorry to interrupt. We missed something we've traditionally done at the budget hearing, which Susan Farber has a motion that we've used in the past. Can you read to us what that was, Susan? Sorry about missing that.
The motion is simply, "To open the Greenfield Public Schools FY26 budget public hearing." So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Was it you, Member Martini? Okay, second from Member Martini. Any discussion? All those, and, oh, we have to do by roll call because we have a member on Zoom.
Secretary Denis, I'm here. Member Martini?
Yes.
Chair Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Back to you, Superintendent, sorry about that.
No worries. The next priority, though, in the budget is to maintain a level of staffing needed to continue to provide educationally appropriate class sizes and programming. We've also discussed the need to assist our ELL population to invest in and adopt the Elevation Platform to support those English language learners. We want to continue to invest in professional development relative to the social and emotional needs of all of our students. We want to provide expanded programming opportunities at the middle and high school for college and career readiness so that our students have alternate pathways to success after high school. We want to expand benchmark assessments up to grade 10 to monitor student growth, and we want to continue to invest in professional development aligned with improved instructional practices, reading, and literacy. And the last slide with our priorities is maintaining staff and processes to support those SEL needs of students, including what many advocated for in the fall, a commitment to restored, adjusted professional development for students, staff, and administration, as well as training active bystanders for our students. We need to continue to refine and increase interventions at Tier 2 and Tier 3 to support our students' academic needs and close those skill gaps. We need to maintain staff to continue to support and monitor student attendance. The district has a chronic absenteeism issue, and we need to continue to support those staff that do that work. And then we need to continue to support and staff the English language learner program and our special education to address the increased needs the district is seeing. From those priorities, though, I just go back to the entry plan that I presented to you along with the findings and the foundation of our core values and priorities in district. This budget was developed with students first. The budget reflects what our students need, and the superintendent, it's my obligation to put forth what they need and what is best for them. This budget also reflects a shared vision with stakeholders. The Budget and Finance Subcommittee made the effort to make sure that stakeholder voice was important and included in this, and this budget receives that feedback and puts forth that feedback with those engaged parents and families that offered their input. This budget supports the ongoing work that we have been doing in district to close skill gaps so that our students can progress and meet those academic achievements. And this budget also supports our continued collaboration with families and what they want in order for their students to be successful in learning. This budget was crafted because the district has voted to redistrict. So this budget reflects the additions needed in order for the redistricting to happen, and that includes two middle school science positions and two middle school social studies positions. With the eighth grade returning to the middle school, they will go to full-year science and social studies. And that is what students deserve. Right now, they have a half year of each. If you're a sixth grader and you have a half year of science in the fall, you may not have another half year of science till the spring of seventh grade. They are not meeting grade level standards, and we need to change that. We have an influx of ELL needs. We need an additional English language learner position for next year. We need a building-based substitute at the Discovery School. All other five schools have a building-based sub to help with coverage and helping out with, you know, monitoring what's going on in the school day, covering classes, helping out at recess and lunch. The Discovery School is the only school that does not have that position. And then unfortunately, the alternative high school program that was created three years ago, that was originally under Greenfield Community College and then transferred to the Collaborative for Educational Services in Northampton, they have cut that position at the collaborative. As a program that has helped over 30 high-risk students obtain a diploma, it is not one, as a superintendent, I could see not putting back into the budget. Those students deserve to have this alternative pathway to assist them in getting a diploma and finding success after high school. So, we're gonna get to some of the budget details. All of this is part of the presentation. There's additional news report over there if you want the line item detail, and all members have this in their packets this evening. The budget that I proposed is a 5.89 increase from all funds and a 7.97 increase over local. You might ask, well, how did we get here? For three years, we were in the luxury of having ESAR funding. We had ESAR 1, 2, and 3. ESAR 3 ended September 30th of 2024, and things that we were able to fund with those grant funds, it's no longer available to us. Additionally, we have out-of-district special ed tuitions that have increased by $1.5 million. We also had a transportation adjustment last year. TravelCOS had overcharged us for one bus, so we had $130,000 credit last year. That obviously does not exist this year. They found the oops, and we're back to having a full payment there. I do caution, however, though, we have not found out definitively if there will be another bus needed in order to support transporting all students where they need to go with the redistricting of schools. Curriculum and instruction materials, you'll see in Assistant Superintendent Sullivan's cost center. The increase has been pretty exponential. We were able to fund curriculum and instructional high-quality materials through ESAR funding for the last three years. Those funds are no longer available, but we need to still support those curriculum materials for our students. They deserve them, they need them, and the cost had to be put back into the budget. And then there are some redistricting alignments where we had to add those additional positions for the redistricting and the reconfiguration of grade levels. I'm gonna go quickly through the cost centers over the next four slides because after that, you'll see I've done each cost center specifically and in detail. So you'll see the specifics as we get through this. The next four is just a cost center comparison from the FY25 local and then the increase or decrease as to the FY26. And when we get to the specific slides for each cost center, I'll go through step by step what those increases are. So you'll see on the first slide here, we have all of the schools and the ups and downs that we've seen at each, and we'll go specifically through each school in a few minutes. Next up, cost centers are English language learners, athletics, all the way through system-wide, and there's been some variations in those cost centers as well. Special ed, 504 services, custodial, personnel, some school committee changes, and then finally with the business administration. Through all of those, you'll see how we got to the 7.97 request this evening. Wanted to go over some of the estimated funding sources. I think, as many of you are aware, and if you watch the news, federal grant funding in its entirety, or federal grant funding at all, is highly in question. We receive a lot of money from federal grants. So what you see here is the estimated funding we've received from Title I, 4, and 2A, which is a federal grant to us. Our turnaround grant is not the state-funded one from the Department of Ed, it is the federal-funded one, so that TAG grant is also federally funded. We have our IDEA 240 and 262 grant federally funded. And then other funding sources that you'll see on the next slide have been school choice, our circuit breaker, sped tuition, transportation revolving, and our AEL tuition pre-K. When I start the next slides, though, I just want to caution, the Excel sheet that we use goes to two decimal points. I rounded to whole dollars, so there's some slides that are off by a dollar if you're actually doing the math, but it's because of that configuration. Don't fret, it all works out in the wash with the dollar at the end, but I did want people to know that ahead of time. So I'm gonna start with the Academy of Early Learning. They saw a 6.47% decrease. They have seven full-time teaching staff. They are six regular ed teachers along with one special educator. They have a .6 social worker this year, based on special ed needs and services provided. They have a full-time principal, a full-time admin assistant. They have 12 instructional assistants. They have their building-based sub and one full-time custodian. Also included on the chart, you'll see that every building has instructional supplies, office supplies, and field trip money, because I know field trips were something someone questioned in the past, so I wanted that delineated. We have used some grant funds from 262 to offset an IA salary, and we've also used some AEL tuition revolving to offset a Unit A salary teacher. The other decrease that you see that accounts for that 6.47 is just a change in staffing and the step rate of a teacher hired that was either on a lower step than the previous teacher that they replaced. Federal Street staff, you'll see that they have a 20% increase, and it may seem as if they have more. They have 12 regular ed K-5 teachers for next year, so that would be two at every grade level. They have three special educators. We have one sub-separate program, a transition program at Federal Street, and then two special educators that provide inclusion or pull-out services. Federal Street is unique, though, you know, we have six elementary specialists, but all six of them can't be everywhere. So three of them spend their full time at Discovery, three of them spend their full time at Newton, and then they split Federal Street. So part of Federal Street's increase is because they share six specialists, not three. So they have a .4 and a .6 of each person's salary. So it may be a little confusing, but I just wanted to point that out because they do share all six and not just have three. Each elementary shares a librarian, so they have a .33 cost share of that for the librarian. And each elementary school shares an elementary instrumental music teacher, so they cost share that of a .33 as well. Federal Street has a 1.0 Title I math interventionist and a 1.0 Title I ELA interventionist. For Corners, you'll see that they have also, the specialists share these, they have 12 regular K-5, so they will have two classrooms for each grade level along with three special educators. We have our ACES program, ACES 1 and ACES 2 at Discovery School, so there's two special educators running each of those programs along with one inclusion pull-out service provider. They have 26 paraprofessionals. The ACES 1 and ACES 2 program require one-to-one for many of our students, so the increase in instructional assistants are the majority of them are one-to-one that serve as special ed students. They also have a building-based sub, which is a new addition to the budget this evening, and then a building monitor and two custodians. They have a day and a night custodian. They also have a split 1.0 elementary ELA math Title I interventionist. Title I grant funding is based on poverty level and your need in school, so they do not actually qualify for two 1.0s in that building. So their interventionist does halftime math and halftime ELA. Newton Elementary. Again, 12 regular ed, they'll have a K through 5, two at each level. That is a, you know, increase of the two fifth-grade teachers that were moving back to the elementary. They have two special educators. They have one sub-separate program, which is SEETS, and then they have one special educator that does inclusion and pull-out. Newton has two adjustment counselors. This year, we saw an increase in behaviors and moved the full-time adjustment counselor from AEL to Newton to help with the service providing over at Newton because the demand had increased there. They also split the elementary librarian and the elementary music teacher, as well as they have a full-time math and ELA interventionist. Greenfield Middle School, the 29% increase may look like astronomical on paper. It's a lot of the shifts that are happening because of the redistricting. So they will have two teams of four in grades 6, 7, and 8 next year. In order to cover collective bargaining agreement preps, they had to increase also the unified arts staff that are there so that they have coverage for not only the electives that we want to increase there, but also so that we meet collective bargaining agreements. They will have seven special educators. They currently have four inclusion pull-out service providers, and they have an ACES 1 and 2 program, as well as a transition behavioral program at the middle school. They have a full-time math interventionist and a full-time ELA interventionist. They split the band teacher with the high school, and they have the band teacher, they will have it .6 of the time next year, and she will increase her time at the high school next year due to another elective that was very popular in the scheduling of the high school. So there's an increase in music options at the high school. And then the middle school has a 1.0 full-time librarian that has remained in the budget, even though it remains unfilled. I think you know from the personnel updates I've given you, we've had three librarians this year, but because it is a unified arts teacher this year and not quote-unquote "a librarian" in nature, they have departed because they want to be a full-time librarian. We value the full-time librarian and feel the need for our literacy focus to have that profession and that person remain in that position, so we left it in the budget, and we continue to post and hope to fill it. The high school, you'll see, has a decrease because of the shift. The eighth-grade teams are moving to the middle school, and those salary line adjustments have been moved to a different cost center. They also have many different additional accounts in news that I wanted to provide for you so that you saw where many of their line items are expended. They have three adjustment counselors currently at the high school and two guidance counselors. They have a principal and two assistant principals. They have two admin assistants in the main office, but they also have a guidance administrative assistant that helps with college applications, graduation, all of the needs in the guidance department. They have 16 paraprofessionals. They also have a building-based sub and two building monitors. There are four custodians. There is one in the day and three that work at night due to the size of the facility. The need is there. The other cost accounts you'll see on the left of this slide, and I think they're pretty self-explanatory. The one, though, however, that we will be removing is the 7,500 because you did vote to eliminate our NEAS involvement, so we will not be expending that 7,500, but I wanted to make that known. The high school also has Title I money for a 1.0 math interventionist and a 1.0 ELA interventionist, and currently, we've been only able to fill a .4 ELA this year. So the, we'll see when and if Title I gets given again next year, what happens. They do have seven special educators, but the high school houses four sub-separate special education programs. We have our RISE program, our Transition Program, our Essential Skills Program, and our Life Skills Program, which services our 18 to 22. We also have three additional special ed teachers at the high school that provide inclusion or pull-out services per that provide inclusion or pull-out services per service delivery grids. The Assistant Superintendent's Cost Center. I highlighted on the slide all of the investments we have made with our high-quality instructional materials, and you will see outside of salaries or obligations to our substitute pool or tutoring pool, the majority of the increase in this cost center has been textbooks, instructional supplies, and servicing those high-quality instructional materials and maintaining them in our district. The cost center for the superintendent. We have an additional support admin staff who handles all of our FMLA workers' compensation and supports the payroll department. The 504 coordinator was made full-time, and while it was a stipend position in the past, no one would fill it. And we have an obligation to meet the 504 needs according to law. So we tried. We worked with the union for many years, tried to do stipends at grade level, tried to do stipends for teachers. We had some teachers try it and then gave up the stipend because the workload is enormous. And so we made it a Unit A position. It's in the collective bargaining agreement, and it is definitely needed so that we are meeting our obligations under law. The ELL cost center increase, you'll see, is the additional ELL teacher we need to support the district-wide needs. That would bring our total district-wide of ELL teachers to five, and that cost center also includes our two tutors that service students. We have one Spanish tutor and one Moldovan Russian tutor currently. Athletics, the cost center did not change. Based on historical spending, we feel as if that will cover what we need for athletics. The nursing services. Every school has a 1.0 full-time nurse, plus we have a district nurse leader position that is in that cost center as well. The salary adjustments really were just based upon different personnel taking a position after someone had left. Admin technology. Our technology department unionized this year, so now they work under collective bargaining agreement, and the salary adjustments in this cost center are based upon the collective bargaining agreement that we have with their union now. The cost center also provides funding for a .5 of our registrar position. Special ed covers the other .5 of the registrar. And you will see that we have five union employees in the IT union, the .5 register salary IT director, and our network manager in that cost center. System-wide. System-wide was really just a decrease. We were trying to clean up Munis Personnel Control Ledger. We moved folks to where they should be because a lot of people are in the wrong spots. But this also includes our Director of Behavior Services. This cost center also pays for our rental of the church parking lot for GMS so that we have the parking we need. It also covers postage, travel reimbursement for staff who travel between more than one building. This cost center includes marketing, newspaper ads when we need to run anything in the recorder, supplies district-wide, et cetera. Transportation. We have 21 staff as well as a transportation coordinator. 50% of the coordinator's position is paid out of the general budget. 50% is paid out of special ed. This cost center also includes McKenney-Vento and Charter School transportation, as well as gas, repairs of our vehicles. We also chose to offset this fund with $400,000 from our transportation revolving this year so that we could decrease the budget request. Special education increase. Our out-of-district costs increase for students who attend out-of-district placements. This cost center also includes salaries for our director, our two assistant directors, two administrative assistants in special ed, and two educational team leaders. Those team leaders are part of the Unit A collective bargaining. So while many of these folks sit at central office and are located there, they are not central office salary employees. They are simply housed there, but they are part of the Unit A collective bargaining. Our psychologists are at our central office. Our ETLs are at our central office, as well as other folks that are in the Unit A because that is where they have space to work. So that is not simply 35 central office employees. I just wanted to clarify that. 504 services. 504 is not special ed. Many people confuse that, and 504 does need a cost center to support any student's 504 needs, such as tutoring or supplies for any supports that are put into a 504 plan for any reason. Custodial and maintenance. You will see that each of our custodians at the schools are in the schools' cost center, but we also have two maintenance workers along with the director of facilities that are in this cost center. We also want to say, though, that the increase in this cost center is really about maintaining healthy and safe buildings. A lot of our contracted service providers for checking up on certain things with regards to building maintenance have increased exponentially. The personnel cost center. Some of this is really collective bargaining agreement issues that we have to fund. So we have Unit A and Unit C course reimbursements per their contract that are in this cost center. We have 403B costs that we have to cover, longevity stipends for non-teachers. We also have professional development costs that admin assistants get according to their union agreement. So this cost center really covers all of those kind of odds-and-ends issues that are required contractually. The school committee, you'll see, we decreased some of the costs for the expenditure of our school committee secretary based on historical trends. And then this cost center also covers your MASs dues as school committee members, as well as your stipends. And then last, but not least, is the business administration. There were some obvious personnel changes this year, and some of the salary adjustments were due to those personnel changes. And then there's the contracted service provider for our current business manager in this cost center as well. So through all of that is how we got to the 797. Some of the highlights, though, are really maintaining and enhancing the programming at the middle and high school, including workforce development opportunities at GHS, financial literacy, keeping the alternative program Beacon at GHS, and accessing foreign language at the middle school, as well as highlighting the increase in music opportunities at both schools. The increase in music opportunities at the elementary level. The instrumental teacher remains, as well as general music, and our budget does account for half of the Strings for Kids coordinated program, which is an outside entity, but is $25,000 of our school budget to support that. We also remain committed to the restorative practice work and the stipends that we have provided to have that work be fulfilled. We have stipends for extracurricular clubs at GHS and GMS to get kids invested into more activities outside of what is currently offered and expand those options for our students. And we remain committed to experiences. We continue to fund field trip funding at all schools so that kids have those experiences and can go outside of the school building to learn. We have a continued investment in high-quality instructional materials. They are costly. It is a commitment we made, but it is a commitment that we need to maintain. We have a skill gap issue. We have students underperforming. They are entitled to grade-level material in front of them. They are entitled to grade-level access, and every student, regardless of their abilities, are entitled to this. In order to sustain that, it costs money, and we need to continue our commitment in all four subject areas so that our students get the education they deserve. We need to continue the support of literacy. As you'll see, our Tier Two interventions and our Tier One diagnostic assessments are part of the work that we're doing with the Teaching Lab, part of the work you hear about in the Assistant Superintendent's Report at every school committee meeting, and how we need to really identify those skill gaps and support those skill gaps so that they close quicker and our third graders move on being able to read. We need a continued investment in professional development that's aligned with district initiatives. We have to support our teachers in the work that's being done on the ground. We have to continue to support our instructional leadership teams and the work that they're doing from the professional development in their faculty meetings and in their collaboration times so that we're constantly analyzing student data and finding out what kids need and addressing those needs. Continued investment in staffing levels to maintain appropriate class sizes. Our average class size right now district-wide is relatively low at 18. Removing teachers means collapsing classes, which means increased class sizes. We also invest in administrative levels to maintain operations and accountability. I hear often that we are top-heavy. We have mandates through DESI, through at least three arms of DESI, and we were chosen by a fourth this past week for civil rights, and Mr. Messing knows, who's with us this evening, to have administrative oversight. This requires numerous, numerous hours and effort based upon that. Our administrators at the building level have to perform and commit to educator evaluation. Over 50% of our staff currently are not PTS, which means they require at least four observations with feedback throughout the course of the year. In addition, they run faculty meetings. They supervise and engage in professional learning time. They have the oversight of daily operations of the school, lunch, recess, arrival, dismissal. They have to supervise and investigate all complaints, bullying, harassment, or otherwise, as well as try to continue to build culture and community with families and parents. I think that numerous teachers know that our administrators are working hard every day trying to support them and what they bring to the buildings that they serve. We also have a continued investment in supporting the social and emotional learning of all of our students. We have counselors that we've committed to maintaining at the levels we currently have along with RBTs at our elementary to continue to assist with the behavior issues that they're seeing. And then last, redistricting was really part of a lot of the shifts here. With the change in the GMS schedule and the offer of more electives in the full year of Science and Social Studies, a lot of that is incorporated into the 797 you see tonight. A question that was posed was, what did level service look like versus what does a needs-based budget that's presented? And you will see that a level service budget is a difference of a $606,352 savings. I caution, though, that level service does have impacts. Anytime you reduce a teacher or a support staff in the redistricting model, in order to continue with redistricting, those positions are needed. And if we adopt level service, those positions will have to be acquired somewhere else. So we will have to make shifts and moves at other buildings in order to make that happen. Class sizes increase and class offerings will decrease. We could use some special ed contingency money for potential out-of-district placements, but then we are also in need of having to potentially ask for additional funds if we need that funding at a later time. And then Tier Two intervention supports that we've been talking about all year with regards to the core PAST diagnostic test and possibly adopting Lexia to help with the skill gap. Those are currently not allocated in the FY25 budget and would need to be covered in the FY26 budget. So I just took a line from Policy DBD since, you know, this was my first superintendent's budget, and this line spoke to me that the superintendent is charged with making budget decisions that reflect the attitude and philosophy of those charged with the responsibility for educational decision-making. The needs-based budget, our 7.97 increase allows the district to fund the staff, curriculum, instructional materials, and programming that students of Greenfield deserve, while also implementing redistricting. And there certainly are options. The reality is, you know, a needs-based budget is based on our district prioritization plan with DESI, our strategic plan, as well as our redistricting plan. And, you know, we can consider options here and there, but with the policies in place for redistricting, that is the proposal that is in front of you this evening. And I just ended with, you know, thanking you for your support because our students really do deserve the best, and I'm happy to answer questions along with Andy or Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you so much for the thorough presentation. Questions on the presentation? Another good one.
So unfortunately, the world is not, I would call, predictable right now for funding. So I have questions about different things, but what... If we had to wait another year for redistricting, what would that save us? Really, money-wise, what would that save us? I mean, that...
It'd be the level service, yes, because everything would remain the same.
Okay. And that's every position is the same, everybody is the same. Okay, that's just taking out redistricting. Okay.
Other questions? Member Denis.
I just wanted to thank you for the very thorough budget hearing. This is the fourth one that I've been through, and it is by far the most digestible. But I did have a question. Maybe I don't understand this. The Business Administration Cost Center is more than the Superintendent Cost Center in total, and I was wondering, could you explain why that would be the case?
There are more personnel in that cost center. So we have payroll, our assistant business manager, our accounts payable, and our payroll assistant.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from anyone who hasn't asked yet? Another good one.
So were we paying the collaborative for the Beacon program?
Yes.
So would we... I mean, so adding that teacher, would it be additional funding? Or the coordinator position, or both positions, than what we were paying the collaborative?
It would be a potential half.
Okay.
We were essentially subsidizing it?
So we had a cost per student, and I think this year it was about 50, but Unit A teaching staff to cover it would be more than 50. I think their B1 is 53. I'd have to pull up their contract, but... So it could be a wash depending on who you hire, but it potentially will be a cost addition.
Is that a program we could accept students from other districts? Not that I'm trying to make any money, but I am.
When I first created it with GCC, that was the full intent, was to try to have it become a program, an alt-ed program that would be Franklin County. And then it became a GCC program, and they only ran it for GHS. And then when it turned to a CES program, they were going to expand it to Franklin County. But then they lost a lot of their funding as well, so they cut that portion of their programming. But I think potentially it could turn into that in the future. I don't think I would propose that for next year when you have a first-time GHS or GPS person running it.
Another chance?
So this isn't a question, it's a comment. Something I found very, very compelling was the move to full year instead of half-year for Science and Social Studies at the middle school. I mean, those are two incredibly important subjects. Science shows up on the MCAS, which our students still will be taking. I have a kid who's a nerd in both of those subjects. I have a kid who's a nerd in both of those subjects and so I have personal stake at getting him more of those classes. So that's my two cents.
I do want to add, level service would not provide for that.
Mayor, do you have a question? Oh, your hand's up, yeah.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Go ahead, you want to take them all.
The first one is, first, that was a great presentation, thank you. I have a question about the out-of-district placements. Do we have the same number of students, out-of-district placements, as we did last year?
I have Mr. Messing with me for confirmation, so let me just get him up to the mic.
Good evening. A little bit more than that, I mean, in short, similar. So if we're talking about four projected FY twenty-six, at the time that this budget presentation was set forth, we were looking at essentially thirty students placed and these are students that we're also funding. But what I would hope folks would keep in mind is, for example, last year, right, when we looked at the students that were reported, like October first of this year, we've reported twenty-nine students, but actually looking at serving forty-four separate students in that time. So I would just caution us, I mean, in short, we're talking about similar numbers of students. The numbers are not drastically different, but we want to also understand that those numbers are only so helpful because some of those students might be a ten-thousand-dollar tuition cost and another might be a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, for example. But if, so if the question is, you know, as compared to projections for when the FY twenty-five budget came out, as compared to when we are crafting the, this iteration of the FY twenty-six budget, pretty similar when we're talking about ebbs and flows. And that becomes much more meaningful when we talk about the context of my desire and my full-throated support for having a contingency. You know, nobody's trying to have extra funds. But when we're talking about the ebb and flow of those students, for example, even in the time since this budget was prepared and delivered, we get notices that we are fiscally responsible for students in one form or fashion. So in short, yes, the numbers are similar in terms of particular out-of-district placements. What is more nuanced is the cost of each of those placements, not to mention the reasons for those placements. For example, you know, referrals versus those things that are outside of our control.
Thank you. And are you able to send us the ages of the students that we... Of those students that are going out of district?
In terms of, I could send you the, both separate out from three to five, you know, in terms of the younger students, as well as six through twenty-one. And then I could certainly give you the grade level bands, of course, if that's helpful. In terms of kind of project out when students might age out, because the other thing that happens is, especially with the highest cost centers, some of these students that are in our residential centers, for example, if they age out, that has significant implications. And the one thing I would just take this opportunity to help folks keep in mind is that part of the other elements or components of the proposed budget related to district quality has an impact on our needs determination, so our performance in district, which impacts our maintenance of effort, which is only relevant here because until our needs determination, our performance with regard to students with disabilities in district improves in a couple of meaningful ways, and that's an interesting conversation in its own, we are not able to take advantage of the exceptions for maintenance of effort, which is to say, we don't, in other years, we would get to spend less than we did last year if a student aged out, if a student moved. As long as we are in a needs assistance determination with regard to our district performance, we can't use those exemptions. So again, not to take up this time for that, but it's related. But absolutely, I can send those in terms of age level bands and grades.
So I had a question about the, what we said was a one-point-five-million-dollar increase. The Office of, I think it's Student with Disabilities, I actually called on a couple of the schools, they all can only go up three-point-six-seven percent for the next school year. So that the cost of out-of-district placement is going to be a million and a half extra is something that doesn't appear that that's going to happen. I noticed that, you know, what we've already paid for this year, which is, you know, it's through February, we've encumbered a lot more than what we've already paid in out-of-district placement. So I actually wonder if it's going to be that much more, where it can only go up that much.
Yeah, that's a great point. So for example, we always want to be projecting out a higher cost than there. It's always easy to pare back as opposed to that. So we use a five-percent expectation. So when they just published the OSD numbers, so it's the Operational Services Division, that they set these rates for out-of-district programs. And a couple of years ago, it was double digits. During COVID, it was asinine. So you're correct, the three-point-six percent. So we actually can reduce some of these numbers by the one-point-four-percent difference. But then also when we look at that, a family moved, you know, we talk about, you know, the ebb and flow. Because a family is going to have moved prior to April first, a hundred thousand of that is no longer needed at this point, right? Not that, not that we don't need to account for the potential that somebody will move in. But again, yes, that's exactly the point. So reducing that one-point-five by the, you know, difference in the OSD cost and then accounting for some of the notifications for fiscal responsibility, so in large part, that's individuals moving in. Or in some cases, like in one case, for example, if DCF terminates parental custody, fiscal responsibility revotes back to where the parents live. So because the parent lived in Greenfield, we assume some of that responsibility to the two, you know, fifty-six thousand, for example. So there's a host of those. You know, we talk about a hundred-and-fourteen thousand. That would be one, we talk about funding in-district programming and make sure we're robust in-district, you know, being able to bring a student back in, right? Increasingly, because of the need at these out-of-district placements, the value-add that they used to provide fifteen years ago is being offset more and more by the increased level of need, which is to say that these out-of-district programs are now only taking the highest needs students. Districts are keeping more and more of those students. And as a result, being able to bring back a student, you know, reduces that. And then we're talking about one-point-three and then we're talking about one-point-two. And then we can account for some, you know, like the seven-hundred in additional, you know, in the cost within that. But yeah, certainly part of that is the OSD increase that was capped. And those numbers came out after this iteration of the budget was developed. And when the numbers are that big, right, that one, that one-point-four percent is significant.
And you know, if the total spending has varied tremendously during the last several years, other than that COVID year?
Yeah, and I was actually doing some of that, you know, and again, to speak to the piece about being top-heavy, like I would love to do more of that trend work, like as I was looking, trying to identify some of the nuances, like even looking back the last year before I came on, twenty-two, twenty-three, trying to sense-make of how some of the people services budget tracking work works were utilized. But the current format's pretty similar. So with regard to the idea that, you know, we're top-heavy, I would just say, I wish I had additional time to devote to that sort of things. It's important, right? Like fiscal responsibility is critical for sustainable administration of a district. I would say that I don't have as much time as I would like to do some of this work, although there are particular deep dives that I think we'll continue to do. And Superintendent Patton referenced some of that work with the significant program audits that we're doing. And I think some of that will bear out, for example, with even internal program evaluation, right? When we talk about evaluation on a couple of key metrics of our internal programs, specifically how are substantially separate programs serving kids? What is the increased outcome for students? If we're saying that a student who's substantially separately placed is going to at least be able to achieve at the same rate as their peers, some of that. But yes, I would be very interested in engaging some of those deep dives. And I think there's a lot of that that would appropriate to partner with some folks in terms of areas of mutual interest as we look back, certainly before twenty-two, twenty-three, right? So as you look back prior to FY twenty-three, I think there's some real lessons to be gained for all the confounding variables, for all the things that aren't relevant and that would obscure any insight from that. I would say that there's enough to be derived from that and certainly informs these conversations that that type of thing, even on the five-year, would be worthwhile. And again, I would love the, I would love to be top-heavy enough for me to have enough discretionary time and effort to do that.
Thank you.
I was going to clarify something too regarding the three-point-six-seven percent. That is only for seven-sixty-six-approved programs. So for those programs that are not seven-sixty-six-approved, there is no cap. So they could go up. The OSD, the Operational Services Division, that's other office of school disabilities, just to clarify, Mayor. They're the weight-setting agency for programs, but it's only seven-sixty-six-approved programs. So any program that we send to that is not seven-sixty-six-approved, the weights are set by those schools themselves.
And that does seven-sixty-six approve mean?
Sorry, that's the special education law regarding placements. Yes.
Thank you. Member Goodwin?
I guess I have two questions. So, and I don't know who this is for. But do you know how many non-seven-six-six schools that are out of district that we are currently sending students to?
Very few. So for example, we looked at one that we had to look at because other placements weren't appropriate. For example, if there are limiting factors for a student. But in short, like we try to keep it under two. By and large, because we have to have a rationale if we don't choose a seven-sixty-six school, there are very few instances where the circumstances would be such that there wouldn't be an appropriate seven-six-six school. But one of them, for example, we have an interesting case. There's a behavioral clinic that we utilize as an evaluatory placement because there, despite a student responding favorably to their time in that programming and the compatibility of that student's needs with the program delivered in that setting, by way of them not having gone through the accreditation, if you will, you know, to be Chapter seven-six-six-approved because it's a pretty heavy lift, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to place a student there. So we have a situation where because the student was not demonstrating faith there, we were able to access some of that under an evaluatory placement. But again, that would be the type of thing where were we, to be able to demonstrate the quantifiable progress that the student demonstrated, that would be the type of rationale there.
And then I guess I've heard this conversation since Mayor Martin was mayor about special ed and the in-and-outs of, you know, the kids moving into town and exactly... So, and every school district has money set aside for that child who may be around the corner because it is a flux-like situation that you live in. So what is, and every district does this. So what is the, you have circuit breaker. You have regular, I guess what I call taxpayer money, local money, local funding. So what is the percentage that you're going to hold on to because something may move into town? What is that?
I mean, it's, honestly, it's community-based. If there's some, I've got clients that set three percent as the number. I've got clients that will do like an average tuition amount. But as far as circuit breaker goes, you're only allowed to carry over your prior year receipt amount. So that's kind of the threshold that if we were to have, you know, a move-in that wasn't budgeted for, we have two options. Maybe we can dig into the circuit breaker receipts that we have even more than we're up. And then that just, again, kicks the can down the road as to having less available for the subsequent years FY twenty-seven and so on budget. Because you always want to keep a year in arrears for the circuit breaker as statutorily allowed.
Okay, so we're keeping a year's aside. So you're basically keeping a year's funding aside.
Which is, in a sense, we're already planning on using that for FY twenty-seven. So it's all theoretically, it's already spoken for.
Okay, so that, that explains some numbers. Because math teacher here is going, wait a minute, I'm seeing double things. So, because I do, like, I've lived this. So, and I wasn't quite sure if it was just setting aside funds. So you're setting aside whatever circuit breaker gives you this year for next year.
Correct. So what we're budgeting for for twenty-six is based on what we received, whereas using slightly more in twenty-five. So what we're going to be getting in twenty-six is what we're going to be using for twenty-seven.
So what was circuit breaker this year? One-point-six?
One-point-four.
One-point-four?
It says the thirty-seven thousand times four.
Okay, you're scaring me. But that's okay, sorry. So, and we're going up, what was the increase? One-point...
Three-point-six-seven percent?
It's going up more. The three-point-six-seven is only the amount associated to the placement. It's, you have to, we're budgeting for the three-point-six-seven percent plus our known placements plus a contingency factor in the local budget for FY twenty-six. Because the FY, the amount that we're carrying over in circuit breaker, we're already planning on using in FY twenty-seven.
Got you.
So we've got, in a sense, I'm going to say, quote-unquote, two contingencies, but one of them potentially is going to, if we decide to use, I'm going to call it the FY twenty-seven contingency, that just makes FY twenty-seven more difficult because we'd be using, you know, more than what we had originally planned for, hence budgeting for a contingency in the local appropriation for FY twenty-six.
I get it.
Framed differently, when I built this budget, I baked in an unanticipated placement at the high school level, an unanticipated placement at the middle school level, two unanticipated placements at the elementary level, and then three evaluatory placements, which are much smaller. They're these several-week evaluatory placements at the Student Stabilization and Diagnostic Center. And those, by comparison, are like fifteen thousand apiece. But baked into that, because on balance, that would account for the potential move-ins, whereas we have done a really sound job of trying to avoid unnecessary referrals. There were some referrals over this past year for students that it was inappropriate for us to have kept. People did their due diligence to try and keep students in. Obviously, budgetary pressures, right, that we don't ever talk about at multidisciplinary team meetings, but are the reality. We had some referrals there. But in terms of those, when I built this budget, the reason I had one at each level was really to ensure we were robust against move-ins because of the high mobility of some of these students. And a reasonable person, not that, you know, correlation is causation, but there is some relationship between some of these highly mobile families and some families who have found their students placed here. So again, especially if we're talking about either Franklin County or if families are jumping between Hampshire and Franklin County over time, there are a handful of communities that families that are accessible with the real estate market. So my thinking was that by having essentially four unanticipated placements plus the much smaller, so fifteen thousand apiece for the three Student Stabilization Center placements, that was a conservative approach, such that we're not coming to this body to say, you know, we need more funds. Or conversely, like when I was in North Hampton, their budget was stark enough that we, anytime there was an out-of-district referral, there was a conversation about what the building principal was cutting to allow for that. And that obviously has knock-on effects that are really drastic. So that's framed differently, that's how I baked in some of those expected costs.
And then just to, the other one of the questions that Member Goodwin asked. FY twenty-five circuit breaker projected reimbursement is one-million-two-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-one dollars. To give you a comparison, FY twenty-four was one-million-five-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-and-four dollars. So it's down by two-hundred-thousand dollars. That gives you an idea as far as the, I'm going to say, the volatility of the ups and downs because then I also went and looked at the special education tuition trends in FY... In FY20, it was $4.5 million out of district placements. FY21, it was $4.18 million. FY22, it went back up to $4.75 million. FY23, it was relatively stable at $4.6 million. So hence the, we'll say the roller coaster volatility of whether it's being fiscally assigned, the responsibility of a student, students moving in from out of state, et cetera. All those things that come into play regarding the need to have contingency in addition to what it is we have for circuit breaker.
And the district itself reports the numbers, correct, to circuit breaker?
Yes.
And to that point, one of the things you talk about, like process improvements, one of the things that we had done even in the last cycle was making sure that state wards were reported appropriately. So the difference between getting a 70% reimbursement for a student who's above foundation. So the way circuit breaker works is any amount more than four times, you know, the pure pupil expenditure. So, you know, talk about like $52,000, for example, you get reimbursed 70%. If it's a state ward, for example, somebody's in the custody of department families for whom, or we get 100% of that. I bring that up because that has real impact on how much, you know, being more effective. You know, are we leaving any money on the table as a result of our circuit breaker monitoring and identification practices? So, you know, making sure we can have confidence that of the circuit breaker monies we're receiving, we are getting 100% of what we could have possibly gotten, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a couple more.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Of the advice that I'm getting from the Department of Revenue and MMA is to be budgeting very, very conservatively. As we can't count on a lot of the grant money. I guess this would be for Karen or it could be for Karen and Andy, whoever wants to take it. Do you think it's wise for us to be doing the redistricting move this year? That's one part. And secondly, have we thought at all of moving the preschool into one of the other elementary schools to be saving on a building and principal custodian? So those are my two, like, like I think, I just feel like we have to be thinking about how we're going to afford this. So whoever wants to take that.
Sure. It is the school committee's purview right now to redistrict. So I would deflect back to all of you that if you would like to change that vote, that would have to be a school committee decision, not a superintendent decision. As for AEL and its move, that has not been part of the conversation as long as I have been in central office administration. So that would be a whole other conversation to be had to see if the space, et cetera, would even be feasible.
And as to the conservative budgeting with the, obviously the concerns of what we're hearing down in Washington, I'll just say that the MAA Mass Association of School Superintendent's Legislative Committee has told us all to, for all intents and purposes, just sit tight and watch what's going on and be in touch with the House of Representatives representing the Massachusetts delegation, the Senate offices, the governor's office, et cetera. So if you want to go strict number wise, if you look at the slide that regarding the federal grants, if those were to go away, the, what would be available to us would be to completely exhaust any potential both current and future, using current year receipts for current year expenditures, which just again kicks the can down the road. I'm going to say when you look at the way the federal grants are budgeted, as of right now, we are, even though it's considered FY25 grants that we're currently using, the federal government set those in the prior year. So they're in a sense a year in arrears. So we, I'm going to say, being optimistic, I understand lowercase C conservative without any political connotations when we're coming to talk about budgeting, is that it's a year away, if you will. The, but as we know what's going on, as we're reading the news, who knows? But at the same time, we can't budget out of fear. We just know that if the things are happening now, if it were to hit the fan, so to speak, there are potential solutions for us. And I also think back about 16 years ago, I think it was under Governor Rami when there were significant cuts, the state stepped in and filled the gap, you know? And so that's other things that are being discussed about the fact that as much as we're hearing about revenue projection, now this is just Andy putting on his financial prognostication hat. If you look at the quote unquote rainy day fund that the state has, I mean, there's potential from several funding options out there that could potentially cover any drastic draconian cuts that could be made at the federal government. I'm going on quite honestly right now that I'm putting my faith in the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Legislative Committee and saying, right now, it's monitoring at this point in time and seeing what's going on and taking the lead from the House of Representatives that represent the Massachusetts delegation as well as the Senate.
Thank you, Andy.
Any other questions? Member Sexton.
Hello. One, I just wanted to take a moment to respond to that because you sort of put the ball back in our court, if that's fine. I, I think it would be helpful to remind ourselves why we wanted to redistrict and we thought that it was in the best educational interests of our students to move them back into the buildings, fifth grade back into the elementary schools and eighth grade back into the middle school. And I don't see why we should postpone making the best choice for our students given that we don't know if the situation will be better in a year or two years. So I think that we should just move forward with our plans now, get it done. And that way, if it is even worse in the next few years, then we will have already made the decision and our students will be where we at least think they should be based on our own judgment. So that's, that's, that's on that. I did, if, if we could start, if we could get into some of the spreadsheet, into some of the lines, I would love to, I just have questions. One of them is line 287, and this is in the very colorful spreadsheet. And this is the transportation contracted services. One, I've got sort of two questions. This is more educational or informational for me. One, I'm noticing a pattern year to year where like in, was that '22 or '21? Goes, it goes from 672 down to $448,000, then back up to 609, then back down to 459, then back up to 607, and now we're going back down to 379. Why is that, what is that pattern representing? Is that like, is there a reason for that? And then the second question is, I'm noticing that we're saving 38% of that budget and it's a pretty substantial amount different. What is the reason for that savings and can we expect that to continue into the future? Or are we going to have to put that back next year, essentially?
So the '21, '22, '23, and '24 are just the local funds that's from the bonus. So we also fund the transportation from the revolving account for the fees that we charge. The reason why it is lower is if you look, we are using, that's what in the slide that Karen referred to as $400,000 coming out of the transportation revolving account to offset the transportation program. As to future potential, I mean, it, I'd be the first to admit that when we came back into the district, when I heard that the district was buying its vans and running its own transportation, I was quite honestly dead set against it. But I think to some extent I've been proven wrong as to the revenue that it's been generating. So it really is contingent on whether or not we can sustain that revenue source for the future years. So if you were to look at the total transportation costs when you add the revolving account and other sources that we use, sometimes in the past, special education tuition covered part of the special education tuition, special education transportation. So when you look at it, it is more, I'll say, steady. Some of those years were also tail end of the COVID. So we had less riders, less buses. And then now with a new contract as well, we had to go out to bid. So it's a new year which resulted in a substantial increase. So I would like to think that we could sustain the ability to use those funds from the transportation revolving account, but we'll have to see.
Thank you. I, okay, I've got a few other lines. And these are not the most fun to talk about, but I need to ask these questions. Line 308. This is part of, I think, the substantial reduction in the amount that the school committee is costing, but I am curious if that is voluntary and how that will impact the ability for us to produce speedy and accurate minutes?
It's just based on trends. Quite honestly, if you look at the historical trends for what it is that has been spent, it seems that it was a budget line that could afford to take a reduction.
Okay. All right, so it's more reflecting the actual. Great. Line 318, that is a somewhat, that is, that is an ongoing discussion. And I'm just curious about in either scenario of either continuing with a contracted service or bringing in an actual employee, would that be roughly the same amount? Or would that substantially impact our budget at all?
You're on 318.
I thought I was on 318.
Sorry, I'm using my rule of.
Yes.
Well, it was a posted position for up to $130,000. And we have no updates on potential filling that position.
Okay.
So tentative.
Great. So it could even save us $20,000. That'd be nice. Great, thank you. Going back up a little bit, back up to 167, 8, and 9. One, I, I just wanted to, and I hope you don't mind that I'm calling this out, that there is a tiny reduction in your salary line. And I just wanted to appreciate that in order to be fiscally responsible. And, but I, but I was curious about lines 168 and 169, what the differences between those positions are and why there's a 73% increase in line 168. What is that actually reflecting?
The 504 coordinator is actually in that account, which is a unit A. And potentially will be moved to the 504 cost center at some point, but that is where the position is held right now.
Right. I think that all of my other questions were answered during the presentation. So that's what I've got for now. Thank you.
Okay, then it's member Goodwin and then the mayor.
If you had to find the 606, I can't remember the exact number, $1,000, what would you eliminate?
Well, we certainly would have to meet with building administration. I wouldn't want to make that decision solo today. So that certainly would be a conversation we would have with department heads and building administration.
So I wanted to go back to transportation contracted services. And I just wanted to talk about the capital policy and green vehicles. We just purchased in the last one, another, for $97,869, a Chevy micro bird bus. And also in this fiscal year, although I thought it was in last fiscal year, out of that same line item, two Chrysler Voyager vans. And I thought that they, they need to go through the capital project and they need to be, see whether they're green vehicles or not. And I just wanted to call that out. The, the one for $97,000 was just on the February 11th warrant. And the, the city overall is trying to have a vehicle plan and policy that is green and, and earth friendly. So every vehicle that we're going to purchase, we have them go through capital planning. We sat with Carol Collins and Paul Moore, the, you know, who's our lead mechanic to go through whether they were actually, we can use our green vehicles, our, our green community status over purchases. It's not just this department, but we look at all of them. So go ahead, I think Andy, we're starting to say something.
So the school, every vehicle that has been purchased, we are aware of the school and city's green community initiative regarding the vehicles. And they have, I mean, we, we actually sent this, the stickers for the vehicles purchased to Carol Collins, I believe, Teresa Martinez did, to show that they are in compliance with the city's green community initiative. Regarding the purchases of them, two of the vehicles were taken off by the DPW because they were deemed unwritable. And so that was going to significantly impact the ability for the transportation to actually occur last year. So the district had the funds available. We went through the state procurement process because it is a state bid for these vehicles. And it was done out of the need to have the vehicles that we could do to operate our transportation program all within compliance with the city's green initiative.
I did just meet with our energy director today and she was not aware of those purchases until I told her, however.
I don't know if I can tell you that communication was made because we were made aware, we knew of obviously the green community initiative and the need for the vehicles to be green in accordance with the city's policy and we adhere to that.
I'm just going to say this, going forward, there's, there's, we, we have always from this day forward, I'll just say that. And I think if we, we make a real big effort, especially on the vehicles from this day forward, if we can work together to make sure that we're purchasing them in a, in a way that makes sense with our earth.
Any other questions?
If I just clarify regarding that $97,000, that was a prior year open PO, so it's not coming out of FY25. So. It was, even though it was processed on the February warrant, the funds were committed as far as encumbered. The order was placed in FY24. So if you look at the detail of the warrant, the purchase order numbers are 2024 PO. Just a point of clarification, there's no, so.
Any other questions? Number Goodwin?
Everything in here is, you know, close to my heart. Number one for me, the priority has been throughout my career when I've faced cuts, and I have faced hard cuts throughout my career. One year I was asked to cut 20 teachers. And is teachers and IAs in front of children. That is my priority because that is what it's about. And then my second priority is making sure that there are reading specialists in every school to help the children who will struggle in reading. Because 95% of kids will learn to read despite what we do to them. This is a direct quote. And then 3% will learn with a systematic, research-based instructional approach. And then 2% will struggle without reading specialists in our buildings. They face a struggle which they shouldn't face alone. So I, I'm totally committed to that. So when I look at this, and yes, we all want to go ahead with making the shift. I mean, I was on the STAR committee and we wanted our K5 elementary schools. Every Thursday of my life, I sat in those meetings. So one of the things I was trying to do as an administrator, I've been a principal of six hundred, I've been a principal of eight hundred, and then I became a principal in Greenfield, is at that time, there was a formula that if there were three hundred kids in a building, that meant you got a vice principal. When I went to eight hundred students in a building, that meant I got two vice principals. Right now, staffing wise, at the high school and the middle school, we've added guidance counselors, which I think we all agree after the pandemic, we needed more guidance counselors. But we have a declining enrollment. We have less children in our buildings and our administration has grown. So I guess, you know, I'm not going to be popular tonight, that's clear, because I will fight for what the kids need. And that's good quality teachers and peers in front of them. And I believe in the materials and we've lost all these funds. So I'm going to actually, I don't know if I'm allowed to make a motion right now.
We have questions right now about the whether we can make motions.
Okay, so if you look at your administrative staff and the number of children in each building, you need to look at the ratio of children to staff. And I think that's, in the five oh four coordinator position years ago, all the five oh fours were handled by guidance counselors along with Medicare reimbursements, which was, was really a problem. And that's when we had one guidance counselor in each elementary school. And so five oh four, that job went from the principals are going to do it to a guidance counselor is going to do it. And now you have a full-time administrator. So I think there's just some choices we have to make for the kids who are in those classrooms. And thank you for the information. I wasn't sure how many first grade teachers we had, how many second grade teachers we have. So we're down to two of everything. And at one point.
Can I just clarify, the five oh coordinator is not an administrative position. It's an unit A collective bargaining position.
Good. That's better. Any other questions? Remember Martini?
Sorry, you know, I have a lot, so I try to let everybody else go first. I wanted to, I'm always trying to keep in mind folks who are watching, who are not familiar with all of the acronyms and lingo that get thrown around in a school committee meeting. And there's certainly been a lot of that tonight. So I have a few just kind of definition on questions. Superintendent, if you could give those who are unfamiliar with school funding and the changes that have occurred over the past few years, could you please explain for someone who is not normally a part of this world, a very brief nutshell of what ESER was and why we don't have it anymore?
I had to go back in my mind about that. Every Student Succeeds Act. Yes, so we had after COVID, ESER one came out initially and then the feds provided ESER. Yes, yes. And then we no longer have any ESER grant funds, but ESER is Every Student Succeeds Act, which is our title one funding, title two and title four. Sorry, my acronym. I know.
Elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. Sorry. It is alphabet soup.
Okay. I wondered, there was a little bit of discussion about this earlier when the special education director was answering questions for the mayor. But I'm sure there are plenty of people out there who might have been confused by the discussion about how out-of-district special education tuition at state-approved schools are set. And Andy, I know you have an excellent little nutshell about that, so I was hoping you could just explain it to people. You gave us a really good point at our most recent budget and finance meeting, so. No, I just, I just wondered, could you explain for folks how those, do we set those tuitions? Does somebody else set them? Who sets them? How do they get set? What happened last year?
So that's back to the rate setting agency, the operational services division set the rates for next year with a three point six seven percent increase. So from, as Mr. Messing said, we move so many students go to those programs. I was just bringing up again for clarification purposes that there are programs that are not seven sixty-six approved, programs that we are, you know, if we are to be sending any students to them, we're not beholden to the three point six seven percent.
And can you explain what chapter seven sixty-six is?
That's the special education legislation.
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to just add to that, if anyone would like to know more about Greenfield Special Education Services, types of placements, et cetera, including the grade level information that the mayor was looking for, I would just encourage them to watch the presentation that was provided by Mr. Messing a couple of months ago at a school committee meeting. And I believe those materials are posted online still. So that would be an easy look back. Okay. We already talked quite a bit about transportation, so I'm going to skip that a bit for everyone. Could you please, Superintendent, provide some detail for folks who were, have not had the opportunity to watch previous meetings where this has been discussed? Could you just provide some detail about how the districts recently adopted high-quality instructional materials? Are improvements for the district over what was or wasn't in place before?
Sure. When I first came on as assistant superintendent, the first thing I was charged with was analyzing district-wide curriculum at every grade level, seeing what each school was using or not using and seeing if it was aligned with grade level standards. And what was revealed is that it was a mishmash, hodgepodge of different teachers using teachers pay teachers materials, some schools having some high-quality instructional materials, but only for some teachers, some not having access to any of the above. So part of our turnaround work with the Department of Ed and our statewide system of support, we were charged with adopting high-quality instructional materials because we were cited for not providing grade level content that was accessible for all of our students, special ed, ELL and gen ed. And our first grant covered the adoption of our ELA curriculum K through seven. Additionally, during COVID, the middle school had done a high-quality math adoption and had worked on adopting illustrative math. The elementary school did not use illustrative and we're working to align Eureka Math for all of our elementary, which is also considered high-quality. They are rated on Curate on DESI's website. So you have to have a meeting of green ratings to make sure you can adopt them under the grants that we initially received. We've further worked to get illustrative math, not only six, seven, but also through geometry at the high school, which was last year's adoption. We've also adopted OpenSciEd, which is helping our science teachers and that's grade six through chemistry, along with the middle school has adopted investigating history. All of these are in line with our mandates under our DESI oversight and our continually observed, analyzed, and we've had DESI site visits, that they do come to ensure that our students have access to high-quality instructional materials, that teachers are delivering that curriculum and that we are accountable for reporting out the progress that's being made with those materials.
So what would happen if the district were to suddenly drop its commitment to all of those materials?
I could not predict, but I could at least guess that we would be cited again by DESI. We have two schools currently in turnaround. Our high school is in turnaround and they have, we are going to an instruction prioritization institute next week because they would like to see ELA, high-quality instructional materials at our high school because of the student progress reports that we have with our underperforming groups. I think it would be very unfair to our student body to pull the rug on what is actually showing progress and albeit slow and steady progress. It is certainly something that in the adoption of these materials, they say you need a five-year window to at least see the effects of the great work that can happen with kids. So it definitely would not be welcomed not to be able to offer these students what they deserve.
Thanks. And I know you explained this, but can you just explain it again? Because I, I think it gets lost for folks sometimes. Can you just explain the shift from grant funding to local funding for those materials? To keep them going?
Sure. DESI is wonderful about providing grant opportunities for the initial rollout in many of the initiatives that they project upon districts, especially those districts that are underperforming. So usually in year one, they give you a, a nice chunk of change to do the implementation process and adopt the materials. In year two, they usually give you a nickel to continue maybe some professional development, but that does not actually afford the curriculum materials. So we were fortunate enough to be able to use that emergency funds in ESER for the last few years. But K through seven and now along with the high school math materials, the costs are exponential to uphold the materials that are needed for students to have access to it. And the shift had to be made to the local because there are no grant opportunities currently right now. However, we look every week to see if there are grant opportunities that might offset some of those materials, but we just have not seen any come out yet.
Okay, thank you. And maintaining these high-quality instructional materials is one of the pieces of feedback that Budget and Finance received during our listening sessions this past fall from stakeholders. So I'm very glad to see that represented as a top priority in this budget. I'm even more glad to see the pursuit of improved tier two and three interventions and assessments. And I wondered if you could please explain for those who are unfamiliar with those terms, briefly, what do those tiers mean? What are tiers one, two and three? And can you explain what investment in new interventions or improved interventions and assessment will do for our students in that context?
I can take that one. So I think part of, tier one would be essentially, if you're thinking of a classroom, would be the whole class. Tier two is a smaller group of students who may have a specific need. They might share that need, that you can do that in the general ed classroom. Tier three is more specific and targeted need for individuals or small groups of students. I think what these assessments do is allow us to hone in a little bit more specifically, to have more of a focus on what the individual student needs are, that allows teachers to, one, know exactly what that need is specifically. If you struggle with decoding or you struggle with long vowels or short vowels, these assessments get down to that level of detail, that way the teacher in the classroom knows each individual student's needs and can work on that in both their tier one instruction and target those needs in tier two instruction. I think there was a second part to your question.
Well, I wanted to know if you could explain, you know, what, what will these assessments do for our students? Are, are they going to get them intervention sooner? Are they going to get them more accurate intervention? What's the outcome there?
It also means that not everything's going to happen in a tier two or tier three intervention. I think some of this happens in the full group at tier one because now the teacher's equipped with more information about those individual students. In the past, and even currently, we have DIBIL scores, we have NWEA assessments. So teachers are getting an idea of the student is struggling, but what their specific needs are may not always be identifiable. These diagnostic assessments allow them to hone in a little bit more deeply. Like I said, consonants, long vowels, the R, the R sound, certain specific skills. And then we're also looking at intervention resources that can support teachers in targeting those skills specifically, but also in their tier one instruction.
So correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is the first goal here is to address needs in tier one and prevent the need for students going into intensive interventions?
Absolutely. I think we, we're looking at all our grades, but looking specifically at early education to make sure students have the skills to be strong readers by grade three. I think all the research says that that is the time that students need to develop those skills. And we're seeing nationwide about sixty-seven percent of students are below, re below grade level. And in Greenfield, we mimic that trend. It's actually a little bit higher based on some of our assessments, closer to seventy percent.
Especially for certain groups of students in Greenfields, such as the students with disabilities that we were talking a lot about earlier.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So if we're not serving those students well in district, where are they going? Rhetorical question. They're going out. So accepting that we hopefully reduce the need for so much intervention, we do need high-quality interventions. So could you talk a little bit about what is being considered for investment in terms of those tier two and three interventions?
Sure. So Alexia is a, is a intervention program that some schools in the district, some classrooms in the district have had before, but it wasn't universal. Ufly is another early literacy support, Hegarty. And they allow teachers to focus on different skills for different students. If the challenge is phonemic awareness or phonics, they have supports for that. If it is, I'm sorry, core, core and pass are the diagnostic assessments. And then the Ufly and Lexia allow for some of that tier two intervention. So Lexia is a computer-based program that teachers could have students working on personalized lessons while they're working on a specific skill based on their diagnostic assessments with either individual or small groups of students.
Thanks. And what problems would you anticipate would continue to occur if the district does not invest in these assessments and intervention tools?
I think that leaves our teachers and ultimately our students in a more challenging position because teachers don't have the specific information about individual student needs. So they're going wider than they might be going deeper at that point.
Thanks. Could you, I think maybe this one's for, actually, I'm not sure which of you this is for, but could you provide some detail about how elevation works and why it's important for our English learners as well as their general and special education teachers who are not their EL teacher?
Absolutely. So one of the main things that came out of the tiered focused monitoring audit that was done in twenty-two, twenty-three, just became, just before I came on board last year, was that our ESL program was in need of a pretty drastic overhaul. At the same time, there were some updates in expectations of how districts were monitoring. So elevation allows us to do a couple of things. Right now, we're moving forward with the FORM solution, which essentially allows us to digitize the experience and data points related to each of the Ls and monitor in real time. So for me, the selling point, the difference in just one more shiny digital platform and something that actually was a lever to improve outcomes, to leverage technology to improve these outcomes, was our ability to progress, monitor students in real time. Specifically, if an English learner, for all English learners, people may be familiar, there's access testing in February, which is a standardized assessment that measures them across four domains, so listening, speaking, reading, writing. Independent of that, it's not, doesn't provide timely feedback because we don't get it until later in the year and we need to have. later in the year, and we need to have more quick feedback to make instructional planning decisions in order of weeks, not months. One of the things that happens is the state sets benchmark targets for English learners. So if you are an English learner, and essentially they can be at level one through essentially five, but they expect most students to be exited if they're above four point two. So in the district, we see level ones, which are the beginners. We see level twos, threes, and fours, which are emerging bridging. They set targets based on your access performance, which is to say, if you scored a certain place or at a certain level at the access testing in the January to February testing window, the Department of Ed would expect you to reach a certain benchmark. If a student doesn't hit that benchmark target, the state is now, which is different from a couple of years ago, expecting us to meet individually and have individual student success plans. Because with what gets monitored, what gets measured gets monitored. So what they're thinking is, is that if we are focused on all these students that don't meet those targets, and we have increased expectations for progress monitoring, specifically no less than three times a year, and this is with a team, this is with parents, this is with staff, this is with administration, being able to identify, you know, what it is that we're doing, very similar to the tier two and tier three conversations about how we're changing the kid's experience to improve those outcomes. One of the things that we're not able to do in an analog experience now is keep up with that in real time. So again, when we talk about adding a fifth position, when we talk about the current experience of English as a second language teacher, there's, it's not sustainable, it's not tenable to expect our teachers, they're doing a bang up job. You know, the teacher, Fran Ortiz, at the high school, is really in an impossible position trying to navigate forty-three of these individual plans, right? You could almost do nothing else. You know, we talk about the ways administration can support that work in terms of helping offset that load. We couldn't do it with pen and paper, just trying to do it manually. So it's really a force multiplier in one way, just with the individual student success plans for learners. Having it in a clear place, it's accessible to all people in real time, all stakeholders that are working with the student. It reduces drastically the time that a teacher is spending on the bureaucratic side of it, the paperwork stuff. And that, to speak to remember Goodman's point, allows them to be in front of kids and focused on instruction and planning on instruction, data analysis. We talk about making sure that English as a second language teachers are available for collaborative planning with their general ed colleagues, because a lot of this work happens in the general ed setting. It doesn't just happen during the sixty or ninety minutes that a student is receiving ESL. So one of the main things that I felt that elevation did for us was a force multiplier in terms of the progress monitoring for students in real time, especially when we think of it being coupled with the test of English language learning, which is a progress monitoring tool that we use that mimics access, that is provided four times a year, that allows us to have more timely results that we can then take action on. So the main thing that it does is digitize and reduce the time and labor it takes not only to be compliant, right? Everybody, you know, cares about compliance, you know, we obviously want to be compliant with the state to make sure that the department isn't putting draconian restrictions on us. But more than that, we care about outcomes for kids. So for me, moving forward with the forms solution from elevation allows us to reduce the time that the average English as a second language teacher is spending on paperwork. It also reduces the likelihood, if we were to suffer attrition in any way, that anything gets lost. For example, you know, you have Mira Robinson, who's splitting between Federal Street and Newton. She does a great job of making sure that the central office files for English learners is kept in sync. So when we talk about, for example, our experience in the last year and a half with all the families who were English as a second language, families of students of English as a second language that were supported by the shelter site, the significant amount of testing and transience, you know, mobility that those students experienced, she did a great job trying to keep the central office files synced, being able to take that away and not be reliant such that all of those materials are within arms' reach for anybody, not having to go back to, you know, a file room at central office, being able to utilize in real time. The secondary and tertiary benefits of reducing the state reporting aspect is an aside, but really it allows for individuals at either the classroom level, the grade level, the middle school, for example, the team level, certainly the district level, to have conversations about how a student is doing in real time at any point in the year, what is currently in place to scaffold for them if we think that their performance is a byproduct of the experience they're having. So if it's lacking in one thing or another, specifically if there's a part of their day that we are not taking advantage of that we should, and allows us to make instructional planning decisions more effectively. It also allows for us to review the timeline of that student's experience for the time we had them in district, to be able to look back, was something missed in a way that we couldn't do now or would be time or labor prohibitive if you were to go, for example, and pull out a student's manila folder and try to manually go through all the years of paperwork and try and connect the dots. You can imagine how challenging that would be. Having it there, having it synced in real time to Power School now, for example, that the CKLA, for example, K through eight, has in Power School grade level assessments, being able to draw that, it syncs every night, is just a, really taking advantage of technology to reduce the time that teachers there. What I hope to do in the future, as we are able to find efficiencies elsewhere, is there's a strategy solution, which allows for even more professional development with general educators. With regard to the other key point in terms of reducing the time that English as a second language teachers are spending on the paperwork and increasing the progress monitoring and instructional decision-making capacity, is being able to share with the general educators. So that is to say, a content area teacher, a grade level teacher at the elementary, and be able to communicate with that teacher in real time about what a student who is a speaker of another language can do. And conveniently, they're called can-do descriptors. So rather than having a deficit mindset and saying, oh, this is a student who's non-native English speaker, you know, they can't do this, they can't do that, helping the average general educator understand, okay, a student is at a level two in speaking. What does that actually mean for their ability? What does that mean for what I can expect, should expect from them in my class, and how I can make instructional decision-making to scaffold my class? What types of things can I do as a general educator to help that student both access the curriculum more consistently and experience faster growth?
Just wanted to check and see whether your next question was answered yet, Amber Martini?
Yeah. I was really struck by the level of enthusiasm of one of our EL teachers when I attended LPAC to gather feedback there about how this is going to enable her to integrate what she was doing with her students' content area teachers. And I think you elucidated that really well. So thank you so much. Let's see. Superintendent, could you detail, or maybe this is for assistant superintendent, could you detail some of the professional development that is identified for the coming year? It's in this presentation several times, but I was hoping you could share a little bit of detail about what that is going to look like based on the needs?
Yeah, so the professional development is guided by the assessments that we're receiving, by feedback that we're receiving from teachers. A lot of it is focused on, in this current year, is on the implementation and the implementation of the curriculum materials and our priority focus instructional strategies, which we want to have more student-centered classrooms, more building thinking classrooms, so that students are doing really the heavy lifting and teachers are facilitating conversations, teachers are facilitating work, and that this is connected to real world and relevant actions that are connected to the standards. And I think a lot of the work has been focused on how we're making those connections to the standards. Are we at grade level? I think the superintendent said earlier that prior to high quality instructional materials being in district, there was a wide variety of things happening in individual classrooms. And now that we have high quality instructional materials that are evidence-based, we know that they're at the level, and I think we want to support teachers in making sure that we're maintaining that level and not saying like, all right, we're going to bring it down because of student, similar to what Mr. Messing just said, we're going to bring it down so the students can access it. How are we supporting them so that they can move up and meet those grade level standards or access that grade level content?
Okay. One of the other things that is clearly represented here is the high volume of stakeholder input that we received this fall, asking for increased and improved restorative practices in preventing and resolving conflicts and responding to behavior. So I wondered, can you explain what objectives the district-wide planning committee mentioned will be working on?
Yes. So our Director of Behavior Services recently convened the team. So it consists of Unit A and Unit C members across the district, across grade levels. They have a schedule that's set up, and they'll be working with the Collaborative for Educational Services. Sapphire and Tom will be joining their meetings to really map out the, we call this year zero, so that they can do a lot of the planning and thoughtful steps that need to be taken in order to have restorative practices ingrained in the district. One of the things that we've talked about, and I'm not sure if this will come to fruition, is really just focusing on a pilot school for next year and who would potentially pilot the work that needs to be done. And then our teaching staff or Unit C staff that are members of this committee could be kind of trained by the trainers and then become district trainers for the years moving forward. We're really excited because the collaborative is also working with our administrative team already. We have a meeting on Thursday with our whole admin staff to really launch this work district-wide. We're not asking staff to do anything that we don't believe the administration should participate in as well. We've talked about this for many years in district, and I've been part of the launch at the high school and part of the initiative and where it's taken off and where it's ingrained. And it can't be a one-person show. It has to become part of the culture, and a lot of that work is just timely. It takes effort and input and practice. And as we grow into that, we hope over the course of a three to five-year plan, that pre-K through twelve, that is what this district is.
Okay. What would it cost to hire a full-time position responsible for this rather than a group of stipended positions? And do you think these objectives can be achieved with just stipends?
So we want staff and teacher input because the buy-in needs to happen because at that level, it really needs to be part of the work that they do with students, with their building administrators, with their own counselors. We have the Director of Behavior Services, and we've kind of donned it as part of that job description, even though it's technically not in that job description, because of the social and emotional work that is part of this person's background and part of the leadership that she has done in the past that can really guide this work moving forward for the district. So outside of an actual additional position, I think the investment is really in high-quality professional development, where folks learn how to hold circles, how to be restorative, how to talk about the harm that they've either done or have been done to them and how to solve that. So I think it's really key that the professional development is there at the get-go and not so much another person in district.
Thank you. That answers my next question already about what advantages to distributing that responsibility. Do you have a sense of whether there are enough staff who are interested in taking on that additional role in those stipended positions?
Yes, the committee is full. They're very excited to do this work.
Okay. Great. I wondered if you could outline for folks, when you were Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, how did you then spearhead the district's strategic development in terms of high-quality instructional materials, related professional development, and also in terms of starting a multi-year plan for developing restorative practices? And would you be able to carry that out now, essentially performing both roles, if you were superintendent and doing your former role at the same time? And if not, why not? Big question, sorry.
It's a huge question, and no. I think many people misinterpret the role of an assistant superintendent as being an admin assistant to the superintendent, and that is clearly not what the job is. The professional development alone, the monitoring of student data, the planning of professional learning, collaboration time for our teachers in the assistant superintendent's role is very time-consuming and a job in and of itself. So I would not be able to tackle both roles. Being both my previous self and my current self would be untenable, actually. I do think, however, though, that the commitment to it is what is intense with the time involved in those positions. And I think that's what folks forget, is that there has to be a monitoring, there has to be an analysis of that data, there has to be follow-up with building leadership, there has to be continual observations, there has to be continual feedback provided so that there's a cycle in place. And that is not something that is a one and done. I've been in the district a long time and seen a lot of one and done initiatives, and it's easy to roll something out and then simply forget about it because you get consumed by other tasks in your day. And that is not something we want to have happen because we are seeing the effect it's having on student progress.
Okay. Amber Martini, we are past our eight-thirty time. I'm wondering if you have, how many more questions you have?
I will keep it to one. Looking to the future, how does improving all of these things that we've just talked about, our instructional resources, assessments, interventions, and professional development, that is to say, improving instruction affect student behavior, student attendance, long-term outcomes for students, and our educators' experience?
Well, I hope it's a positive trend moving forward for all parties involved, but I think ultimately, schools are the foundation of why people come to communities. I think when you have families that are looking to move into a town, one of the first things that they look at is, how is the school district? What's the school district like? How is the school district performing? And I think it's very important to remember that all of these things are necessary to improve student progress here in Greenfield, so that our schools are not in turnaround, so that our students are not underperforming, so that they are allowed success and have a bright future where they can have a sustainable job and live in this community, get back to this community, and be part of a community. So I think it's very important that we remember all of these things are working for the best interest of our students. While I know that some of these initiatives are a heavy lift for our teaching staff, I have to commend them a hundred and fifty percent because they work harder than any other bunch I've ever met, and I give them credit every day for all of the hard work that they do, all that they tackle. I think we still do have some behavioral issues that we need to address, and the support staff that are there to help with them is pivotal to having all of our students be able to access the curriculum and be in a gen ed classroom so that they are offered the same opportunities as every other student.
I see a question from Amber Sexton. Are there other questions? There are? Should we do a five-minute break and come back to finish this? Is that okay? There's plenty of time left. People want to ask questions, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure we got another break. So we'll take a five-minute break. It's eight-thirty-nine by my clock now. We will resume at eight-forty-five, as the clock turns to eight-forty-five.
Welcome back. We're on the questions section of our budget hearing. Member Martini, did you have any more questions?
I shook up a lot of times, so if somebody else has questions, go ahead.
All right, I'll have to member Sexton.
I want to give member Childs a chance to ask a question because I'm not sure she has yet.
Hi, member Childs.
I just had a comment or a question earlier. So my question is, so we already know my thought on how full-year science and also social studies are important, but in terms of those positions, would it be logistically possible even to continue having the sixth and seventh graders with half year for that in order to maintain the staffing level instead of adding in those extra positions? Is that something that could even feasibly work in the schedule or because of prep time contracts?
It would definitely need to be remapped out with the middle school principal because the current configuration and schedule that we have for the middle school relies on those positions and the current middle school schedule that they have doesn't have those positions. So we would have to either create schedule number three and what that would look like and then how that would actually affect coverage under the collective bargaining agreements.
Member Sexton?
I mostly am wanting, I have, there's probably a question in here somewhere, but I'm also wanting to externalize my thinking for anyone who's following along at home or might view this later. But something Mr. Messing mentioned that sparked a train of thought in my brain about the families that we have had living in the emergency shelter and coming to our schools. In past meetings, you have reflected that some of those families have in fact found permanent housing, which we celebrate, not in our district. And so a person could wonder then, is our total number of students receiving ELL services going down? That's a question that you could answer. But noticing that our ELL services number is actually going up, somebody might think that there's a mismatch. I'm wondering, is my, my thinking on that in trying to answer my own question without asking of you is that that actually represents, one, getting all of the students that we still do have access to services that they maybe weren't previously getting, or getting them a higher quality of service than they weren't previously getting perhaps, or just like volume of it, as well as like maybe it is not true that our ELL student's population is declining. So could you respond to that?
And Dave can verify all of this, but I'll try to start the answer though. ELL services are based on the level that the student is identified at. So you need more services as a Level 1 than you do a Level 5. With regards to our decrease in numbers, I'm not sure we decreased exponentially. We still have quite a few identified. I think it's 102, I was gonna guess at my last conversation with you, but it could have switched and changed. But it is also providing the services based upon the level that they're identified at. And that is the need that we have currently in district.
Yeah, and that's exactly it. So even with the families, the vast majority of families have already been rehoused. Couple of families did find alternative housing in district. But when we think about the numbers, even when we account for all the families that we were previously serving, you know, when we think about a high, we were like up north of 123, and now we're hovering around 100 plus or minus, depending on the point of the year. But still, to speak to Superintendent Condon's point, like for example, newcomer students that require significant portions of their day, like one of the things that the state is asking us to do, you know, those are commercials of high-quality instructional materials, is improve our newcomer curriculum, our SLIF curriculum, Students with Limited Intercultural Education. So that's exactly it. So it's not just the number of students, but it's the amount of time that they need. So with that span, I referenced a teacher being split across two buildings, being able to ensure that as potential increases there will come back, that's manageable. We aren't currently doing a good enough job for our youngest learners, specifically like we're flirting with noncompliance at our preschool level, difference between math, state law, and federal state law there. But even as we think about the high school, when we're talking about even with the district's significant focus on development of early literacy in our K through 4 folks, making sure that we're not leaving, you know, kids that are currently in middle or high school behind, it is untenable to think about a caseload, you know, of 35 to be able to provide meaningful instruction. That's even before we talk about, for an English, as a second language teacher specifically. But that's even before we talk about all the other work in terms of ensuring access, you know, inclusive opportunities, all that. Just purely getting students instructional experiences that can be reasonably expected to result in gains requires that even once we account for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member Goodman?
So my heart is breaking because 70% of the kids are not reading at grade level. So I guess I'm just questioning why there aren't more requests for reading specialists at all the schools. Because to me, that is a civil right that has gone unmandated and unfunded in our country, that everybody has the right to learn to read. And so I'm concerned, you know, everything here is important, but to me, that is a, I know that districts have bitten a bullet and put more reading specialists in, especially in elementary schools, to lower their special ed numbers. Because the number one reason that children get referred to special ed is because they have a reading difficulty. So if we want our special ed numbers to go down, and one piece of information that maybe listeners don't know, or parents don't know, is special ed teachers are not reading specialists. They are trained in special ed. And the children of our district need reading specialists. Special ed is when we're looking at accommodations but not direct reading instruction. And so the more reading specialists we have at our elementary schools, the better we will service our youngest students, and we will lower your numbers. And that is a goal, because financially, it pays for itself in the long run. And at the age of five, they know that they are struggling to read. It used to be the red birds, the blue birds, and all of that good stuff. But children can tell you at the age of five that they, other people are reading before them. So I guess I'm questioning, and I know you were trying to keep it down, but what do you identify in here as something that's going to help our elementary schools get more of our children reading? The high-quality materials, I got that. But what else is in there that would do that?
After the adoption of all of these high-quality instructional materials, we don't have a Tier 2 problem, we have a Tier 1 problem. And that's the problem that people don't identify. So, so reading specialists would identify a Tier 2 or a Tier 3 problem. And when we have looked at all of the data and analyzed all of that, we have a Tier 1 problem. And we had an inverted triangle when I came on as assistant superintendent. We were intervening for 80% of our population. And intervention should not be for 80% of your students. So the high-quality instructional materials require a certain amount of time for delivery. So we have intervention built into our elementary schedules specifically for not only pull-out services by the hired reading specialists that each building has, but then a lot for the intervention time in supporting our Tier 1 teachers in being able to apply in-time interventions based upon the diagnostic tests that we actually are adopting. I don't think it's necessarily another person we need. We need to strengthen our Tier 1 instruction and learn how to analyze our data and analyze student skill gaps. So that's what we're really focusing on with the Core and Pass, and then adopting Lexia and Ufly so that Tier 1 can be strengthened. And then Tier 2 really becomes a true pull-out of your 10% to 15% of kids that need it.
So do you still have data meetings?
We do. We do. And we have them as a district. We have them as building leaders. We have them with instructional leadership teams. We're now doing it in professional learning time. And we're identifying our three subgroups that are underperforming in those data meetings. So we have really taken on that task this year. And what that data says to us is Tier 1 needs to be strengthened so teachers know how to actually assist those underperforming kids that are in front of them, and lessen our Tier 2 pull-out interventions from a reading specialist. But that also means that people have to understand the science of reading and how kids learn how to read. So we've upped our ante in professional development in helping teachers in the Tier 1 level identify how to actually be reading teachers without being reading specialists.
Member Martini?
I just had a comment that fits in well with this discussion. And, and I really love watching someone talk about something. That is their passion like that. So that was, that was delightful. But I just wanted to add to the discussion about whether or not to proceed with full-year science and social studies at the middle school, because this does pertain to our reading achievement problem in Greenfield. Raising, raising reading achievement in a district that fits squarely within the national quiet literacy crisis that's been going on for a long time, where 2/3 of our students are not making it to grade-level proficiency, is such a multifaceted project. It's never one thing, and it's never even several things. I mean, there are so many parts of that. And I think that this issue of full-year science and social studies is one of those many parts for us. Because we talk a lot about helping our youngest students to master foundational skills, and I'm really excited that we're talking about that, because there have been some serious gaps in terms of developing phonemic awareness and decoding skills and fluency for our students. And also, it's important that we don't forget that background knowledge and vocabulary are essential to comprehension. Those three other things that I just said constitute the other essential components of reading instruction. And I don't know how we're providing adequate background knowledge and vocabulary to our students, particularly our middle school students who are struggling some of the hardest academically in the district if we're not providing them full-year science and full-year social studies, especially as those are content area domains that have very specific vocabulary in them. And if we want to improve our students' literacy and therefore their academic achievement overall, we have to do this. And I also just want to say, I agree with member Sexton's comment from earlier. I don't want to wait to make this shift in terms of redistricting, which also then necessitates this change to instruction at the middle school, to next year or the year after that, waiting to see whether or not we might lose all of our federal grant funding that year or the next year. I would like to have this done now, so that we have our established field, so to speak, before any such changes will potentially come down the pike. So.
Other questions? I guess I have a question, and I guess it refers to some of our budget vocabulary. So I'll try to do my best to explain what my question is, and maybe Andy can help if I get this wrong. But when we talk about revolving funds, we're talking about special accounts that let us essentially carry money over from one year to the next. And sometimes it can be there as kind of like an emergency piece. And we're saying, okay, transportation is something where we want to draw from some of those funds for this year, for this budget, or that's what's being recommended by the superintendent. I'm just wondering if you could give us kind of a overview of how revolving accounts are doing overall in prior years? We had been getting kind of close to the edge in terms of using some of those up. And how are we in terms of the health limits and the recommendations of where those accounts should be and where they are?
Sure. Again, as to the definition of where they should be and where they are is kind of a, a value. You figure out what does that community's feel. As I said, I have one client who hasn't agreed with the town that their total, just because in a similar way, that free cash can only be 5% of a community's budget, they use that as a dollar threshold for what is that the school can have and combine with revolving accounts. So it varies. But one of the standard rules of thumb is that you shouldn't be using current year receipts for current year expenditures, because you always want to use like a year in arrears is what it is. That's a best practice approach when it comes to revolving accounts. We are currently at that point, slightly with circuit breaker, where we're looking at to use maybe, I think it's about $10,000 more than the prior year receipts they were allowed to carry over. But as of right now, we are still, we are quote-unquote, I'm going to say, using the prior year receipts balances and not using current year receipts for current year expenditures. So that's solid for us.
Is that forward motion for us from the past, or how we've done historically?
I can say, the second time that we were here in Greenfield, maybe six years ago, we were using current year receipts for current year expenditures. And to be perfectly honest again, and I tip my hat to, even though we use, we, Greenfield used some of the ESR funds for positions, we did not create anywhere near a funding cliff like we've heard of other communities regarding the significant use of ESR for personnel. So by using ESR as we did, and it is, not that I would ever want to go through a global pandemic again, but it did allow districts, and Greenfield was not unique, in using less of its revolving accounts than it urgently anticipated, which allowed us to get us back to the point of being able to not use current year receipts for current year expenditures.
Yeah, I kind of want to underline that, what you're talking about, because it was, I thought, very savvy of you and the prior superintendent in terms of really making a firm decision not to use the ESR funds for personnel. And so we're not facing the cliff that some other districts are right now with, you know, million-dollar deficits and so on. So I really wanted to celebrate that because of the district leadership. We're in a stronger position in that regard. Any other questions? All right. So we'll move on to any motions. I have a motion prepared, which would be for us to adopt the superintendent's budget as the school committee budget. That's the, for us, unless there are other motions that people want to make right now, which would be to make specific recommendations for the superintendent to make changes to the budget. That would be something where we would, as a school committee, vote on whether to direct the superintendent to make changes to the budget and bring that back to a meeting that we would have next week. So this time, I would hear those motions. Member Goodman?
I move that we direct the superintendent to eliminate three administrators and take the remainder of funds needed to match the 600,000 number from the increase in special ed.
Susan Faber did not get, did not get that. So you'll need to repeat it.
I can repeat what I have so far. Your motion is to direct the superintendent to eliminate three administrators and take the remainder of funds needed to match the 600-something number.
Yep. Let me get the exact number for you.
606,352.
Thank you, Andy.
From the, to match that number from the increases in special education.
Yes, the requested increase in special ed.
The requested increase in special education. Thank you.
Thank you for the motions. There are second? I'm not seeing a second. Are there any other motions? Not seeing any other motions. I would like to hear a motion to accept the superintendent's budget for FY '26 as the school committee budget for FY '26 at the total amount of
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was a motion from member Goodman, and a second from member Martini, is that right? Okay, great. Any discussion? I'll, I'll say a few things, I guess. I appreciate the apparent willingness of the committee to move forward with this budget. I really appreciate the superintendent's fairness and clarity in your presentation. I thought all of the administration tonight did a really wonderful job answering a lot of really hard and questions on the spot and gave not just us, but I think the whole public a real education on what's going on and the way that students are being thought about in our school system, which I'm incredibly proud of. I really am glad that we're not going back on our commitment to do redistricting. We think that educationally, it's the right thing to do, and it's important that we, as a district, as a school committee, put forward a budget that represents what we really think is best for the students. It is a budget that reflects a lot of hard choices, and maybe there will be hard choices ahead for the mayor, for the city council. And, and I just want to say that in the richest country on the planet, the fact that these choices are so hard and that it pushes taxpayers so hard to pay for these schools, they do in a world where billionaires are taking a sledgehammer to government instead of contributing to public education, is a cry and shame. But I think that we, I'm proud of our leadership, of our committee, and of our city in taking on these hard challenges together to come up with a budget that will work for our students and for our community. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, member Goodman, will you, Secretary Dineen, will you call the vote?
Yes. Secretary Dineen, I'm a yes. Member Martini, yes. Chair Johnson, a sign?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs? Member Vivian?
No.
Mayor Disorga?
No.
Okay, the motion carries with two noes.
Okay. So the desired outcome of next week's meeting would have been to take any changes that the committee directed the superintendent to make and to vote on the final budget. But since we've done that tonight, I think we will cancel that meeting. We will hear, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
First, please, a motion to close the budget hearing.
Oh, thank you very much. Honored parliamentarian, which I really appreciate. I'd like to hear a motion to close our budget hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was a motion from member Childs and a second from member Goodman?
Martini.
Martini. Okay. Any discussion? Secretary Dineen, will you call the vote on the motion to close the budget hearing?
Sure. Dineen, a yes. Dineen, a yes. Member Martini?
Yes.
Chair Johnson, a sign?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Goodman?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are adjourned at 9:13 PM.
Thanks for your hard work, everybody.